So chocolates, a perfect segue to talking about the Hudson River.
Something like that.
Probably the Brown River.
I have, I'm one quarter Swiss, so I have relatives there.
No way?
Yeah. My grandmother was Swiss.
You get half the bar?
No.
Where in Switzerland?
Baden is the city of the...
Okay.
Is this a bad place at all?
It's not. I've been there.
That sounds like it's not too far from where I live.
It was in, well, nothing's too far in Switzerland, but it's up sort of in the northwest corner, like near Burn.
Okay, cool.
So, yeah.
Very cool.
So our discussion is, um, yeah, we'll have to keep chewing. It's very rich. Um, how kind of our, how we want to react to the U.S. Coast Guard proposal for anchorage grounds on Hudson River.
I think we need more spots of anchorage.
But obviously we've been following what other municipalities have been, have been doing and how they've been responding. And I think, I think, I think our board is kind of in line with what our neighbor communities have felt, which is you're not really, just like to have a whole bunch of potential petroleum vessels parked just out, just south of us, I guess, and north of us as well.
I think it's a real issue to undo 50 years of river cleanup with the risk of increased, and you know, this is not just fracking stuff, which is coming by training through all of the port, port of it been out. They're trying to counteract the loss of the ex, exal pipeline by training in, shipping in tar sands and then shipping it down the river.
Right. So I also think that it's a bit of Pandora's poppy square. If I really felt that this was really an emergency thing where they would only be there if it was really rough and it was really, you couldn't see and they're going to be there for, you know, first, you know, service, if the fog clears or it's light out, but that's not how I see this happening. And I think we've seen where they've got to have these in the past, it's has, it's really become a place to dock it for a lot of reasons. And, you know, to me, when you, when you start talking about oil, one of the greatest games of oil is you fill up your tanker.
Or you wait.
Or you barge, or you wait, then you wait till the oil price comes up.
Correct.
So, you know, to me, this could be a nice, you know, floating, you know, oil fields, basically. So I'm not, I'm not super, super excited about this. If they had a real, to me, again, if it's a real safety issue, um, they'd have, they'd have kind of a limb on it. As soon as it was safe, you wouldn't be there anymore. But that's not how this is being proposed, at least not the way I'm reading it. Um, you know, again, if you said you wanted to have anchorage that was, again, only emergencies use, um, I probably wouldn't be that upset about it. But to me, it's more of a convenience for the, for the, for the firms that are going to be docking here. And I agree, it's also, it kind of goes against, you know, this was a, I mean, think about our waterfront, I think it's a great tangible example of the change in view of the river. The river was a kind of nest, not necessarily evil, it was the, the artery that created the river towns and, you know, all the, all the development up and down the Hudson River because it was easy to ship goods. That's, we've kind of moved away from that. I mean, I think, uh, you know, how many pieces, pieces you got to clean up before you kind of say, let's not try to do this again. And I think it's also, I think that, that kind of got me a little perturbed is the whole idea of, you know, they're doing this to prevent oil spills or, you know, it's a safety issue. It just rang very hollow to me. Um, and, and to me, when you're disingenuous about something so important, you know, it just, it kind of makes me angry. Not that you have to be angry or not angry at something like this, but, um, you know, so I, I think that I'm very supportive of making a statement against.
Well, if it, if half of it is true in terms of what the procedure is supposed to be, then it sure seems like the Coast Guard is not following the basic procedures on the books in terms of having this regulatory oversight with community input and, you know, environmental impacts and so forth, so forth. So that's another thing that I find very troubling is that it's just sort of like, I guess they expected everyone was sleeping at the wheel or something, at the wheelhouse.
Brian, when, when did we, because I wanted to ask, when did we fir, were we given, I read Mayor Spann's letter from Yonkers, it says, advance those of proposed rulemaking for the, doesn't make some additional ecretions. So when did we, when did communities first hear about this?
Well, I mean, imagine the communities that are more closely affected heard about it earlier. We only heard about it frankly from the historic Hudson River towns executive director, Jerry Fiala, who forwarded the, the actual language of the rulemaking that appeared in the federal register, you know what I mean? So that's where those things get announced.
Okay. And that was, when was that?
No, I mean, I'm sure I forwarded it to the rest of the, yeah, yeah, no, but it was probably like last week. I mean, yeah.
It's, it's very recent.
Yeah.
But I think the, it sounded like the municipalities themselves were somewhat taken aback by how quickly it came.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I, the first I saw of it was that, I don't know how quickly a place like Yonkers heard about it or how long they've been, you know, having discussions or not, you know. Tuesday, August 2nd is the, is the email that I got from Jerry Fiala.
Wow. So, but what, in terms of the recourse that we have, can we stop this or?
I don't know.
I think it's for public reception, public outcry and then putting pressure on them.
Yeah, they're looking for public input and they're obviously getting it from, from some communities and the question is whether you want to lend your voice to that as well. Mary Jane Schimsky's office, I circulated a quick email. They are also interested in the resolutions that you may or may not pass, so they'll probably lend a voice to it as well. Our federal representatives have been asking the U.S. Coast Guard to have, uh, public hearings, but they also acknowledged in the course of asking that, that they acknowledged that it's after the deadline for which they could have asked for that. I guess there was like a June 30th deadline that, that they would have needed to ask them to schedule a public hearing, so now the federal representatives are even potentially behind the April. It's just interesting. It was, that article was in the Journal News, so I'm only going by that. So.
It seems to me there's two, two pronged approach, if you will. One is to make sure, to first voice our concern that the correct procedures were followed and it seems to me that if even if relatedly, if there's requests for a public hearing is important enough that there should be one. And not just, you know, take the procedural out, oh, sorry, you know, you're four days late in asking. And there's another reference in this, the Depp's Ferry resolution to, that there was a requirement that federal agencies forwarded to the municipality for review and recommendation that that wasn't done so that we might object to the failure to conform to procedural requirements?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I think we can refer to them generically, but I don't, I don't know the federal regulations about this, so I wouldn't want to profess that I do, so.
But that, in short, that we can give some reassurance that all of the appropriate procedures were followed, um, in terms of public input and informing the effect of municipalities and that we also could express the concerns that Brian so well expressed about just the general, you know, meaning and effect of this kind of use of waterways that we have worked so hard over decades to clean up.
Also, I think it's in conjunction with the cleanup argument is the, is the, you know, terrorism scenic Hudson argument, meaning, you know, it's not just the cleaning up the quality of the water, but it's providing, you know, access to waterfront, removing the impediments, industrial impediments to access the waterfront, providing a greater residence, but also terrorism resource. And so it seems, again, stepping backwards to start to bring in, you know, large ships and barges and having just, it's one thing to have coming up and down the Hudson and it's kind of like a reminder of the past, you know, but when they're docking, you know, up to 16 or more of them, you know, between Yonkers and Dobbs Ferry, that becomes a much different scenario.
Okay, so what do you think we do, we should try to take?
Well, I'll come up with a draft resolution and circulate it around, so, I mean, I'll pull.
The tweaking of Dobbs and maybe adding some of the...
And what I heard tonight, yeah.
Correcting the grammar. I guess they must not have my hand working, brother. Who wouldn't build the grammar?
And I'm also getting, I'm guessing that Connie is a big component of docking vessels. I mean, she's on one of those.
She's already, she's kind of expressed her opinion already, uh, in emails.
She has a note in the record, but I'm pretty sure, I mean, we understand her stance on this as well. So, good, well, we're all.
And September 1st is the deadline for, uh, deadline, yes?
September 7th.
First of 7th, Brad.
I think it's the 7th, but hopefully let's, let's loop you to the center of time for Monday, Larry.
Yeah, that's, that's the intention, yeah, try to get a draft resolution.
Correct.
And I think it'll have to be this after all of the higher level political background, yes, local and state level, that will...
Yep, yep, absolutely. Update on the New York Prize, microgrid feasibility study. I think the New York Prize, it sounds like really...
I'll try to, I'll try to be quick about this, but I think it's, it's important that you hear what's, what's going on and what the status is. So, first of all, I did send around some information. I'm not suggesting that you may have, that you should have read it by now, but, but it is there for your, yeah.
It's actually fairly easy to read.
For your consumption at some point. But let me just start by explaining a little bit about what a microgrid is and, and how it can apply here in Irvington. So essentially, a microgrid is a, an electric grid, in this case, an electric, mostly electric grid, that would replace parts of the electric grid that's currently here in Irvington. So it's its own little mini-grid, a microgrid, that serves a limited number of customers in a limited area. And within that grid of connected utility, customers, in our case, just picture Main Street, but basically Main Street up to the high school, so all of Main Street, single line, that within that grid area, there's an ability to generate electricity in various locations. You may have solar panels on certain properties along the way, maybe the high school, for example, there's some real estate up there on the, on the roofs. I think Sunnyside Bank was pointed out as a, as a, you know, flat roof type area that could be some real estate. But also other types of generation like combined heat and power generation, which is essentially turbines that are operating off of natural gas. And, and those are, they're self-contained units that are like the size of a refrigerator that can be placed in certain areas to generate electricity. So if you, if you have enough electricity being generated within the grid, the grid can, in theory, function on its own without the need for outside power. Ideal, you know, that, that would function that way. And it wouldn't just function, you wouldn't just flip the switch when, when you have a power failure from Con Edison. It would, it would run all the time. It would be almost like a mini utility, which is the easiest way to describe it. It's like a little mini utility because you are selling electricity, not you, meaning the village, but the people that are operating this would sell electricity that's generated within the grid to its limited range of customers. The, the lines that would exist, the electric lines, would not be up in the air, they would be underground. They'd be underground to provide resiliency to the important facilities that are along the way. In our case, it just so happens that almost all of our important facilities are right on Main Street. So that's why...
Charlie, you know.
Well, yeah, that's why Irvington is, was a, was a prime candidate for this type of a, of a grid being constructed. So the, the grid would operate in a, on a blue sky day when everything's as nor, business as usual would operate, it would, it would generate some measure of electricity, which would be sold to certain customers along the way, could be, it would be the village, of course, but there could be others along the way. Some of the businesses along Main Street may, may become customers, depends on electric rates and whatnot. And, and then when there is a power failure, there's automatic switching that would essentially put the grid into an island mode where the electricity that's being generated would only be used for the customers on that grid and it would basically be uninterrupted power during the failure, which, you know, has happened a few times recently, so. So the other part of this is that as, in addition to the electric lines being buried, and by the way, it wouldn't be an extra set of electric lines, it's not like there'd be underground lines, but Con Ed still have their wires for their customers, that's not the way the world works. You know, the customer, you get served by one line and the electricity travels through that one line. So if this microgrid were to be built, what commonly happens is that the utility still has its customers along the way as well. There might be scattered customers that are Con Ed, scattered customers of the microgrid and the, there'd be some sort of a joint use agreement where Con Ed basically gets to deliver its electricity through the lines, but the microgrid is going to maintain those lines. So that's their, that's, that's very compelling for the electric utility. They'll, they'll take their lines out of the air and start using the ones that are underground happily because, you know, as is documented in our report, 90% of the outages occur because of problems with the overhead lines. It's not, there's, it's not, you know, the other 10% is transformers and other things, but, um, so in addition to the electric utility, putting lines underground, the, the other utilities would be encouraged and would, would be strongly likely to put their lines underground as well. As long as we're doing all the, not we, village, but as long as the microgrid is doing all the trenching, the cable company would have a very good case for just throwing their lines underground as well at the same time, which means that we could eliminate all of the overhead lines on Main Street. That's essentially what, what the, the end result could be. So that's what a microgrid is and what it could mean here in Irvington. What we've done so far and to explain some of the terminology that you heard, like New York Prize and all this other stuff, NYSERTA put together a grant program which was called New York Prize and the purpose of the, of the grant program was to fund a number of feasibility studies around the state. Petra, our, on our green policy task force alerted us to this a year ago, over a year ago, and put together a grant application which was paid for 100% by NYSERTA. The total grant, I think, was around, or close to $80,000 and the contract for, for the feasibility study was about $80,000. So we were awarded a grant, we were one of 80s around, or projects around the state that were awarded such a grant. So that was an accomplishment, but not a huge accomplishment because there were a number awarded. The feasibility study then took place. The final feasibility study, I, I gave you an excerpt of it, the executive summary at least. The final study hasn't been yet accepted by NYSERTA, so it hasn't been published yet, although they, um, they will be publishing all of those and of course we can as well. But the, the feasibility study was done over the past eight, nine months, it was completed back in roughly March and submitted. And what, what it showed is that technically a microgrid could be built here in Irvington. There are, there are no significant technical barriers for doing that. What they said is that it wouldn't necessarily be financially feasible unless there's some additional outside funding. And originally, when we went into this, the New York Prize process is, you know, these 83 grants were awarded initially for the feasibility studies, then of the, of the projects that showed that they are feasible, at least technically being built, there would be a second stage of funding competition, which would fund design and engineering, which is pretty significant, as you can imagine. That second stage is expected to be very competitive, they expect to have somewhere between, I think, 10 and 15 awards. And so that's a consideration. But some sort of outside funding, whether it's from NYSERTA or somewhere else, would need to make this project financially feasible. If the goal of, of a microgrid in, in the ideal sense is that it would be so financially feasible that there would be private investment that would come in and simply build it, we would give the permissions to let them open up the streets, but they would build it, you know, a private company would build this without any municipal investment, just municipal cooperation essentially. And the project would get built, we would see significant benefits at zero cost. That's the ideal sense. We don't have ideal here, but we have, we, we wanted to explore just what it might take to fill that gap, just how much funding would be needed to fill the gap. So we, we extended a series of questions to Hitachi, which is our, our feasibility contractor, consultant, and the questions were essentially, what can you do to scale down the scope of the microgrid? They had identified five separate nodes, they're called, five separate nodes that would be part of this overall microgrid. One was Vane Street, one was Dallas Lane, one was a couple, a few other places. Some of those were financially advantageous and some of them were less financially advantageous. So we asked them to go back and eliminate what they felt were the least financially advantageous ones, really focus on the important ones, which of course had to include Main Street, otherwise we wouldn't even really be talking about this, frankly. And it turns out Main Street is financially viable and the benefits are, are real. So we asked them to scale it back to try to bring it closer to financial viability and then tell us what they thought would be that, that number to close the gap. And so they did that, they, over the last couple of months. And what they basically did is they eliminated, they reduced it down to two separate nodes, which on the agenda, you'll see there's, there's kind of a PowerPoint presentation which has pictures, but, but the nodes would be the Main Street node, which is all of Main Street up to the high school, and then the other node is just Dallas Lane School, which seems a little interesting, but it's, it is financially, it makes sense for them to do that. And then they said, basically, the gap that needs to be filled is about a million dollars. Again, not set in stone, but this is just for conversations, just to see if there was even a possibility here. So, so then, you know, we heard that and, and when I say we, Mark and I have been looking at this primarily, Petra's been involved somewhat. The million dollars doesn't necessarily scare me and the reason why I'm even, even talking about it is this. You have, you had a proposed project, now I know it didn't go anywhere, but you had a proposal to essentially bury all the lines on Main Street at a cost of nine, roughly $9 million. That's what the streetscape plan identified as the cost to bury lines on Main Street. And as much as I think it would be really wonderful to have that, I think $9 million, I'd probably be building, building a firehouse in a DPW facility, you know, but that's just, you know, I'm trying to be realistic about it. So, um, but the reason it was so expensive is because there was no way to recoup any of that investment, it's just sunk costs. You, you put them underground and the Con Ed can, functions the way it normally functioned. In this case, you have a whole different model happening here where, where you have essentially a, a company that's going to have these sunk costs, but it'll have a revenue stream to recover, you know, as a certain return on that investment. And so you have a way of, of recouping those types of capital costs. And so it, what it essentially does is it reduces what would be the village's contribution to a $9 million project down to a million dollars with all of the benefits that we've been talking about, which is resiliency to our critical facilities, resiliency to some of the businesses that choose to sign up, you know, promotion of, of using renewable resources because you'll be installing, well, some natural gas-fired items, but, but also renewable resources like, like solar panels. The cost of the energy, as, as has been analyzed here, would actually be less than what the energy costs are right now for combined, in the case of the village, New York Power Authority, which is where we get our power from, as well as the Con Ed transmission costs. The combined would be less over time. And then, you know, the final obvious thing is that the lines are buried, which is, has some, some benefits to it as well. So that's, that's why we're even talking about it and we haven't, we haven't brought this to you as a board before this, because we really were trying to understand what this all means, how it boils down. Has it been done in New York State to any great degree? Not on a community basis. There aren't frankly that many communities like this around the country that have had this done, most are out West. There are plenty of examples of, of private facilities or even semi-public facilities doing this, like New York University, for example. They have, you know, a Cogen plant that powers all of their, their facilities and they probably have solar panels in a variety of places, so when Sandy hit and the grid went down, they had power at all their facilities, you know. So I mean, that, that, but that's a decision they made on a facility-wide basis, but essentially that's a microgrid, not a community-based one.
It'll reduce the ton of...
Sure, yeah, so. But there aren't very many examples in this country of this being done and certainly not in New York State. And that's why the New York Prize project had, came about, because they were trying to encourage this to happen with, with money, with investment. Now, the, the, the topic of should we go after the NYSERTA money or not has come up and it's probably still undetermined as to whether we will or not. There are actually significant added costs for us going after the NYSERTA money, there's a certain way that they want things analyzed and done and it does add a layer of cost to it. It would be made up for if we got it, but it would be lost forever if we didn't go, if we didn't get it. So that's a, that's something that hasn't been determined.
Do you think how much, roughly how much?
For the design, it's, you're probably talking about $600,000 for design, four, four to 600,000, I think it was. So it would be on the low side if we did it not to NYSERTA's requirements, it would be on the higher side if we had to go after the New York Prize, so.
And do you have a sense of our, our likelihood of being one of those 10 to 15 communities?
Look, the people we were talking to, and I, and I only know from talking to the consultants is they feel it's low, a low chance. That doesn't mean we won't necessarily rule it out, I mean, frankly, they, they could still put even, they could still put an application in and, and see what happens, but it really is going to be a decision that we haven't made yet, but it has to be made at some point, so.
And is, is the economics and that sort of thing, community type coming to the...
Yeah, that, that is one of the things they mentioned, although I read the requirements myself and I didn't see that, so we have to get some clarification on that.
What do you mean the Hudson?
The economic...
Low, low income area or...
I thought what they were saying, was that not so much for phase two, the design and engineering, but certainly for fate, for funding the actual implementation, they thought it was going to be highly skewed toward communities that did not have, you know, strong tax base.
Yeah.
It's going to make sense.
Mark and I both, and you were also, I think, in the March presentation of this one, and I remember at that point, the Hitachi people were so excited because this was like...
Things changed.
The perfect, the perfect place to do this, on Long Street, on Main Street, and then clearly there was a shift in their position because it looked like they were, would have happily partnered with us whether or not we got the prize. What happened?
They, they had to refine some of their assumptions, I don't know if it had to do with construction cost or what, but they, they refined some of their, their assumptions and it, it was looking like, back then, it was looking like this was a zero cost to anyone, you know, it was going to, it was going to pay for itself and quickly too. So that is the way we heard it, that is, you know, they didn't, they didn't say it that way to NYSERTA on purpose, you know, because they, they wanted to at least keep the option of applying for funding with NYSERTA if they needed it. So, but they did imply that there was, it was going to be able to fund itself, but it, the assumptions had to be refined, they missed whatever it was they had to change, they changed it and updated it. And that left us with, you know, a series of questions about, okay... And that left us with, you know, a series of questions about, okay, so what would it take, you know what I mean, to see if there's a gap that could be closed.
What was, what was coming out was, without any additional funding from the village, from the municipality, the effective power rate would not come down, it was going to be above by a penny or so.
Yeah, it wasn't, well, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's enough that...
They couldn't make, in other words, they couldn't guarantee, they couldn't even sell it then, because you're asking someone to pay more for something that is just power. Unless they make it so that it's below the projected cost of NYSERDA power in the 25-year timeframe, you know, sorry. Huh? Con Ed, sorry, yeah. Unless they can prove that it's got, the curve is sufficiently below that, then they're not going to get the, you know, the capital funding to go forward with investors, which makes sense.
So, this million dollar number, so it's nine million dollars to?
Well, underground the wire.
That's our estimate, their estimate is actually a lot lower, so there is some, there is some discrepancy between our estimate and their estimate, but they're, they continue to be confident in their estimate.
So, the million dollars that we would have to fund, that's, how do, how do we get the million, how does, how do, what's the math there, how do we get the million dollars that we have to pay for out of this nine or somewhat less than one dollar per day?
Well, you borrow for it, as a, you float bonds.
I'm sorry, I'm asking a different question, where does the other eight million come from?
Well, I think they're saying two point six.
It's, yeah, see, here's, here's the discrepancy, and we questioned it a lot, right, Mark? We talked about this significantly.
Yeah, we kept coming back to this, as the one, the, well, they had some very specific stories, rationale, construction.
Right. So, they think, they think that our numbers were essentially padded numbers from Con Ed doing the work.
Scaresfated.
Yeah, I guess so, I don't know, but that's where they think our consultant got the numbers.
And they, they went to the, basically, the, there's a national standard for all sorts of kinds of public utility and street work, and blah, 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 engineering work that's geared for each region of the country, and so they were using numbers from the Northeast, which took into account, you know, union pay scales, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And they still came out with a number that was at least, I mean, literally for the entire project, was at least one-third of what Con Ed projected in terms of the underground unit.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of the questions they answered in our question and answer page here, but our estimate came from a bottoms-up build of the construction estimate from construction industry standards using 2006 RSM data adjusted for Eastern New York labor, material and equipment rates. While we are sure there are some nuances missed in this feasibility assessment, they won't be missed in the detailed design and pre-construction Phase Two.
Well, if their numbers are correct, would that bring out the million dollars down?
Uh, no.
No.
No, the two-point, their construction estimates are what's driving the analysis right now, not our estimate. Our estimate was kind of a sanity check, and we were concerned about it, I mean, why wouldn't we be? So, we turned over our, it was just a simple table that we had in the Streetscape Plan, and they're in the process of analyzing it, but we wanted to make sure that we're going in with everyone's eyes wide open, you know, to make sure that no one's missing anything.
And, I mean, frankly, even though it's not a zero-cost build-out, they still seem fairly enthusiastic, when we meet with them, about moving forward, they think the community is, and the modeling they've done makes it reasonable.
And it's in their backyard, too, this Hitachi group is based in Tarratown, so.
So, they think there might actually be some additional benefit to being able to have a showcase that's so close to the grid that's really pushing this sort of engineering in the US.
I mean, I think it's, even without cost savings, it's a very exciting thing, even without cost savings, and I think it's unbelievably exciting, especially because while, you know, Irvington as a village, I think is probably unique, it almost seems like neighborhood to neighborhood, there can be a lot of replication of this design, I mean, Irvington could be a neighborhood in a, you know, town, I mean, it's kind of this. You know, so to me, it's not, you know, I don't think we're so unique that it's not, you can't replicate this other places, I think it's, to me, it's very exciting, for a lot of reasons.
We had, look, it would have been really easy to, to look at this, and hear that it is feasible, but not, you know, financially, it's not quite there, but, and just walk away from it. And that may be what happens, I don't know, you know, we have to see how this plays out, but I think that the potential benefits are tangible enough that we shouldn't walk away. That's currently my recommendation, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to get, gauge a sense of interest, too. And again, we're not committing to anything right now, this is really just hearing what it's about, you've probably heard the name, but probably didn't understand exactly all the inner workings of it, you know, and that's understandable. And probably in March, I didn't either, you know, you know what I mean, so, because it's just...
So, the question, your follow-up question, which you wrote?
Well, it was, then it starts to get really focused on, okay, let's get down into the trenches here and see how this could actually work, because, you know, if we've got this, if we've got this strong desire, and look, I'm not going to blow the Streetscape Plan out of proportion here, but you have to recognize that the Streetscape Plan got basically hijacked by this whole conversation of burying the lines, you know what I mean? We didn't go into it saying, we have to bury the lines, let's figure out if the community wants us to do it or not. We went in wanting to know what kind of benches we're putting on the corner of Main Street, and what kind of flowerpots, or tree pots, or whatever, and it got basically taken over by the whole conversation and the whole notion of being able to bury the lines. And so, that drove different aspects of the report, if you read through it, it, there's, you know, if there's wires, do this, and if there's no wires, do that, like, that's how the report ended up developing, so. And it didn't, and it wasn't from, you know, one person saying that, it was from the steering committee, you know what I mean? So, so knowing that that sentiment is potentially out there, and then seeing a way of constructing it and being able to get a return on it, from private investment, that would lower, not eliminate, but lower the village's costs than that, is, to me, that's a, it's worth looking at, you know what I mean? I mean, how many times do we have a chance to attract real private investment to something that has real municipal benefits? Usually, they're building a healthcare facility, or a whatever, it's, and so there are some little here and there benefits. This is like a municipal project being, you know, eighty percent done with private money, you know what I mean?
And I, I mean, it's such a kind of unique, or really is a unique setup with, you know, kind of the way we're so massed together that it makes it feasible, that to me, the million dollars that would be our piece, I'm not convinced that there isn't some way to find some of that, or, you know, like, with grant money or things, it just seems, with line-harding stuff and the, you know, FEMA money, or who knows, especially if we, you know, are willing to work with them to be a model community for something, you know, and that, so to me, it might be, you know, if you do get it down, even, you know, like a couple hundred thousand, it's, you know, this becomes more and more feasible from our side, of the penny bank.
Right.
Can I ask a question, though, Mary? So, you mentioned that Hitachi would get a revenue stream out of this, how?
They would, they would enter into power purchase agreements with the various customers who chose to sign on.
Okay.
Now, of course, the village would be one of them, I mean, we, because we have a good number of facilities, and they're all, you know, significant emergency facilities.
This would be like a new operational business for them, they manufacture the hardware, and they, some of the hardware, they do engineering integration, but now they're seeing that actually operating it is a continual source of revenue, or could be a continual source of revenue.
So, they would kind of function as a utility?
Yes.
They're very careful about not saying that.
Okay.
Because utility, well, yeah, utility means Public Service Commission regulation, but, so it's not a true, because, when you really dig into this, and a lot of this is covered in the executive summary, but when you really dig into this, you would not be disconnected from the grid completely, because the, the amount of generation of electricity would only provide about seventy to eighty percent of the needs of the users along the grid. So, you wouldn't be getting everything from the grid, except...
From the microgrid.
From the microgrid, yeah, sorry.
You would have overall grid.
Yes, you would get, you'd get the balance from the overall, need to get, get something from the overall grid. So, there are interconnections, except when there's a wider outage on the, on the public, large public grid, we would go into island mode.
Unplug.
And we can, yes, there's automatic switching, it's a very smart system, the way it's described. And, and in fact, even within the grid itself, you may, you know that there are going to be Con Ed customers intermixed in the grid, because the lines are underground and they're all coming through those lines. The, the agreement with Con Ed is that during island mode, the Con Ed customers would be shut off, because we need to, the grid needs to have enough power for itself, not for Con Ed's customers, see what I'm saying? So, it's, but that's okay, because those customers would have been off anyway, you know what I mean?
It's not disadvantaging people who would otherwise have had their lights on, they would be like, just like everybody else.
We're talking about the area of grid, not, we're not talking about any other areas.
But this way, the pier, and the schools, and the firehouse.
Yes, they would continue to function.
The senior center, the library.
Uh, not the senior center, it doesn't go to the other side of the tracks, as much as we would like it to, but they're, going under the tracks is a daunting task for them, and they would not want to do it.
Right, that was in the question.
Yeah, that's right.
That was one of the nodes dropped out.
Yeah. But, anyway.
Fire and library, yes.
Yeah.
So, that's how they, they would generate revenue, through creating power for some things?
Yeah, selling, they'd be selling electricity, because it, the way it was described to me, when I first went into this, I was thinking, okay, so the grid's just going to be there, and then when there's an emergency, we'll flip it on. That's not what happens. Flipping on a, like a cogenerating turbine is not economically feasible, it's going to sit there until one day, maybe it'll work, and it needs to run, and it's going to generate electricity all the time, so you're going to be selling electricity all the time. It's not just there when, it can go into island mode, but it's not just going to turn on magically when there's a problem and then shut off, so it's always going to be generating electricity, it's going to be generating, you know, seventy to eighty percent of what those customers need on a regular basis.
So, Con Ed is potentially would lose customers, which is, and the trade-off for them is that we're burying the lines, or the lines will get buried, and that would be to their advantage?
Yeah, there are other advan, yes, the maintenance is to their advantage, because there would be none, because the microgrid would maintain the underground lines. But the second advantage is that there would be, I forgot the exact terminology, but there would be, they would be shedding load from their circuits, which are already overloaded.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, from a business standpoint, would they be losing customers? Yeah, in a sense, yes, but they're also shedding load, and they're, and these microgrids were targeted in areas where they, you know what I mean, because they can't keep up...
So, they're really partnering this.
Well, that's the way, that's where this New York Prize thing is structured, they were, there's things called opportunity zones, where there's opportunity to shed load like this, and this is wonderful, so.
I don't know if you guys can see emails I get, but like, every time it hits eighty-five, I gotta get an email that says, you know, if you could ask your residents to buy yourself electricity.
And they have some customers, like they've...
Like you.
They have, they have some customers where there's, there's smart switching or load reduction, that have agreed ahead of time that will allow the utility to cut back on our voltage, or on our, a certain level of supply, in order to, so that they have those customers ready to drop down when they need it. This is a drop-down all the time, and certainly during, during emergencies, it would be, so.
Well, I think it sounds absolutely something we should consider.
Yeah.
Choice, I guess, will be if we find that, you know, the bottom line, explore all funding sources and whatever, it's going to cost us something, and what is the trade-off, how do we make this a priority, and what would be the trade-off with other things we perhaps like to see get done? But this, to me, sounds like essential service, and so, has so many advantages in terms of environmental responsibility, in protecting our residents, in the case of some awful power outage that's on for more than a day and a half.
Right, which has been known to happen.
To me, another one of the big things that they say, you know, the terrorism targets, never mind explosions and things, but the actual grid itself, and to have all these nodes, you know, to me, seems like kind of a logical nice stat.
It's a distributed, yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, it's self-sufficient, for the most part, you know, it's...
Yeah, well, yeah, not a hundred percent, but, but, you know, a lot more than it is now, so.
Exactly. It's only going to get better, too, I mean, solar's only going to get better.
Right.
So, I just think, we'd just underline the one other factor, that apart from resiliency and security and, you know, environmental issues, blah, 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 you know, and the fundamental thing is, a lot of people believe, or, and not just in Irvington, but in urban planning, that when you do things like, take the lines underground and create, rebuild your, you know, your community infrastructure in a sense of, you know, replant the street trees, et cetera, et cetera, and the increase in terms of business and tourism, and actually in terms of health benefits is significant. Yeah, they're showing that, that areas that actually have replanted the street trees, you know, people spend more time meeting together, they spend more time window shopping, you know, there's all these sociological studies, studies that show there's a significant net benefit. So, while that seems kind of boozy-boozy, but in the long run, the goal is to keep the community livable, and keep it kind of, it would help, I think, enhance that kind of small, small village, community feel, and also, you know, kind of plays into a lot of what Con Ed's supported a lot, in terms of creating a historical tourism, I guess is the word for it, I don't know if I'm not using the terms he should probably use, but I think that's important, too, because there's probably some long-term that benefits, community-wise, but also business-wise, that would fall out of this as well. Maybe harder to clarify immediately.
I just, I just one more question, though, on the first foray into providing electrical, or providing power.
On the east coast.
On the east coast, yeah, I believe there are installations out West, but a very limited number, though.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm asking because I, I'm wondering, how can we ensure that they can provide the same level or quality of...
That's all going to have to get worked out in the development agreement, that's, I was going to mention that, as, as to what the next steps would be, once you've kind of given your nod that, hey, it's interesting, let's look at it. The next step is to review a development agreement with them, which is, I have a draft of it, it's a model template that they have, they just sent it just as, so we had something to look at. It's, you know, it's going to be tricky, I mean, I, if you think community choice aggregation was tricky when you went through all that, this is even more so, so.
Very easy.
So, but, I know, she can't retire yet, I'll tell her that, too. Questions like that are very important, questions like, what happens if they do the design and realize that it's not feasible? You know, like, they come up with something, you know, like, what happens? Who pays for that? You know, those are questions that are outstanding, what happens if you all get voted out of office and the next board doesn't want it, and you pull the plug on it? Who pays for that?
Well, this is very minor, but what kind of, what kind of branding will they want from us if they're going to do this for us? You know, every sign has a little...
I haven't seen, none of that was in the development agreement, but I, but who knows?
I was curious about that, too, like, Main Street was going to become Hitachi Street.
Yeah.
Hitachi way.
Hitachi way.
That's a good one.
Yeah, Hitachi.
So, all of that would have to be in the development agreement, so it's, although I don't know about the branding, I didn't see anything in there about that, so.
I think it's all the details will come out, it's all interesting stuff.
Definitely.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's exciting enough to at least continue to explore.
Okay.
And so, where are we on that?
Well, this was it, I was waiting.
No, no, they have to come back to us, right, with the other level of detail, or something, I'm waiting after them.
We have to, we, we have to negotiate a development agreement.
I can understand.
Yeah, that was, my notes said that, that was the next step, if we decide that we're still interested here, they will provide a draft of the agreement, which they have, I haven't circulated it yet, because I wasn't, my point to it yet, and then we have to review it and start to get comfortable with it, so.
Is that...
Yeah, complicated, but...
Yeah, to me, it seems like it's, like, one of the bigger things we could possibly think about, you know, a lot of it's...
And it hits, it hits on a lot of, not to, I'm not jumping to the priorities, to... And it hits, it hits on a lot of, not to, I'm not jumping to the priorities discussion, but it hits on a lot of potential priorities for this village. So it's, well, it's why it's really worth a conversation. So.
I'm sorry that we didn't have any, any members of the public here tonight, because I think people would be and will be really excited to hear about this too.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, um, they'll hear a lot more about it.
Last steps to go.
Yeah, they'll hear a lot more about it, I'm sure. So.
Okay. So we'll go to the update on Tatoochee Town Hall?
Oh, yeah, right.
The future of Tatoochee Town Hall.
So, um, I, I did provide you with a, an outline of this in writing. This is just to refresh your memory.
Thank you.
So I had, I had hesitated to really provide any detailed updates. I know that a couple of members of the board had asked me to do that at meetings, and basically my statements were that we're, we're locked in a dispute with the contractor and we're working, trying to work it out, you know, that kind of thing. And that's really all I could say. So basically, uh, the, the project, as you know, has been delayed, uh, pretty significantly. We're probably, uh, eight months behind. And the, it is as a result of a contractor that wasn't doing the work that they were supposed to be doing. They, their subcontractors were very good subcontractors, but I think they were, there were some financial issues with them and, and they weren't working either. So. It took us, uh, a few months, you know, from, from about February, March, uh, until, uh, the end of April, beginning of May, to really build a case, uh, against the contractor. We needed time for the contractor to, um, you know, paint himself into a corner and we needed to gather some information. We did that, and we eventually went to the, the performance bond company, the company that holds the surety, the surety bond. And, um, you know, most, most of the time when you go to a performance bond and call it, you know, their, their first goal is not to pay money. Their first goal is to not pay money. And, um, and so, uh, we've been getting and have gotten extraordinary cooperation from the bond company, and the only reason that that's happened, in our opinion, is that the case that was made was so clear.
Excuse me, but that meant you, you needed to take time to allow them to fail to perform on multiple levels at multiple stages? Cause you can get caught so easily in the dispute.
Yep.
Who, who, who failed to fulfill the contract first?
Yep.
Did they stop because we stopped paying? Did we stop paying because they stopped? So that's, that's.
A lot of back and forth.
Process. So, um, when I heard had this resolved, very impressive.
Yeah, I mean, so far, so good. It's, so where we are right now is that the bond company has taken over, as you know, you terminated the contract with the, with the main contractor, Caladri. The bond company has taken over that contract. They have hired a, uh, construction manager, so to speak, who has contract, and the, and the bond company has contracted with the existing subcontractors, who were all very good and very enthusiastic and wanted to work. They might not have been getting paid, so that's why they weren't working, but, but they wanna work. So, um, so we're talking about the mason, the window con- restoration contractor, um, the scaffolding company, the steel company, and there's probably one other. And, um, so that, all of that is in place. We executed a, what's called a takeover agreement that allowed the bond company to take over the contract. So going forward, any payments that we make, and we, you know, we had plenty of money to pay out, but we weren't paying it because no one was working. So, um, we, those payments will now go to the bond company. So they're taking the place of the main contractor, essentially. But if there are cost overruns, um, if the project, well, there are gonna be overruns for them. Doesn't, but it doesn't concern us, but it, there are overruns because the scaffolding's gonna be here for probably nine months longer than they expected. The scaffolding wasn't even up to par, which is why we called in the Department of Labor to inspect it. They've been working for seven days outside fixing the scaffolding, just to bring it up to safe condition. So, but again, that's one of the things we had to let the contractor hang himself on. So.
The scaffolding?
Yeah.
It's pretty medieval.
I wish. So, uh, so that's where we are. We expected work to start on August first. The scaffolding contractor was out there on August first doing their work. But no one else could work until the scaffolding's fixed. And, and like I said, up until yesterday, they were still working on it. So.
So hopefully next week.
Yeah, I think the, the window contractor's ready to go. The mason should be back soon. Terracotta?
Terracotta.
Yeah, that was, that was the other supplier. That's the main one.
Yeah, the main one that's, that hold everything up.
Yeah, the terracotta, my understanding is, um, now the terracotta is the most important time driver of this project. The terracotta, from when the order goes in to when it gets shipped here, and then the mason installs it, that doesn't take terribly long.
It's very historic.
Yeah. They, they couldn't even get approved, an approved order to go in. So the order was, was completed. The architects signed off on it, said everything looks good. And the order, I believe, has been submitted. So, or it's very close to being submitted. So we'll have that hundred day, you know, we'll be in the queue. But again, all that required payments, and that's what the bond company took care of. So, that's that. So the, um, the timeline, if, if, for people that ask you and for our public stance on all this, is, is we would hope and expect that this will be done by the end of the year. The only thing that could delay that is if, uh, yeah, if the terracotta arrives and the weather is miserable and the mason can't install it safely, and there may be some delays as a result of that. But I think if everything, uh, if things are delivered by November, um, it could still happen, um, if there's some cooperation with the weather. So. And the window restoration should take place, you know, fairly easily. And it's the terracotta that drives all the timeline. So, all that being said, um, the one thing that I wanted to make sure you understood is that there was a significant, there was a significant possibility of significant losses on this project, significant extra costs, that could have been incurred by the village, had this not all worked out the way it did. There were some extra costs, but not nearly significant as what they could have been. You know, if, if, if the contractor walked away, if we hadn't made our case good enough to the bond company and the bond company didn't step in, there may have been money that the village would have had to pay out in order to get contractors to start working, and then, then we're on the hook for the extra costs. It would have been, it, we estimated at least a couple of hundred thousand dollars that could have been at risk here. And, um, and it looks like it isn't. So, um, we did have, uh, significant extra costs and we project significant extra costs with our architect. The architect had to do a tremendous amount of work, dealing with the contractor, building our case, and now the, and now the architect still has to work another seven months just to get, I mean, from, from the end of May to the end of the year. Had to work seven months longer than expected, just to get the project done. So all of that shows that, that there's gonna be an extra fifty thousand dollars of, uh, estimated cost for the architect. What I'll be doing on Monday, when I'm not here, is asking you to approve a change order for fifty thousand dollars for our architect. But now you understand what the context is. It's not just a, a blind overrun of, of some number that we made up. It's, it's a, it's a real thing. So. Um, in addition to that, we did spend, uh, uh, very close to twenty-five thousand dollars on Calji's services. You approved a contract for, uh, Calji Construction Company, which was acting as a construction manager slash advisor to the village on all of this. Um, they have a significant amount of, um, experience in public contracts and dealing with disputes. And so we needed their, their expert advice. Only twenty-five thousand dollars. I, I was worried that if this kept going, you know, we'd continue to need their, their services, but, um, they're off the clock now, essentially.
Another problem with them is their name is too similar to Caladri.
You don't know how many times we mix that up in meetings?
I have to refer back at all times.
Exactly. Um, and, and of course, Marianne's time is Marianne's time. She was great, uh, reviewing all these agreements. She was great, you know, analyzing our position. Again, not so much from a construction standpoint, because we had Calji there looking at it, but from a legal standpoint and all that. So, um, I don't even know the exact number for Marianne. I haven't gone back in it. But it's, that's a rough estimate of, of, it's, it's no more than that, uh, twenty thousand dollars. So. All that being said, the project still is under budget, projected to be under budget by about sixty-four thousand dollars. There's probably, the, the one number I don't have in here is I, we are gonna be doing some landscaping out in front, once this is all done. Some of it is funded by the grant for the corner, but some of it is not. So there will be some component of landscaping that we'll have to pay for. It looks like we have the room to do it, and it's not gonna be sixty thousand dollars. So, might be, might be ten grand worth of palm trees, right? So that's it.
Speaking of that, it'd be nice to spend a little bit of money or have VPW or someone come up here and de-poison ivy by.
They just cut back, uh, they, they cut back the whole front. It's not all weeded out, but it's, it's all cut back, so it's not overhanging.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not, I mean, I, I'm, I'm tempted to have some. Like everything.
Right, I know, that's the next.
It's all getting replaced anyway, but I haven't done that yet. Okay. All right. Okay, so, uh, priorities.
Just before we start on that topic, just a segue from what we were just talking about with town hall. This is a perfect example of, you can set a priority with and expect it will take a certain amount of time and then. So, these are all aspirational priorities, but you understand that, that they can get reshuffled in many different ways.
Right. And look, there's not, um, there's not an expectation that every priority you set has to get done within a fiscal year, nice, neat and clean. You know, some things are like that. Other things aren't. This is a significant restoration of a building that hasn't been done in a hundred and ten years. So. It's not, um, it, it was delays and it was, everything was going along smoothly, but, but despite that, it's gonna get done, and it's gonna get done under budget. So. But it doesn't change the fact that you still have to address it. It's, it's gonna be on your priority list, because you have to get it done. All right, so I sent, um, I sent around a, a matrix of, um, priorities. You ready to move on to priorities?
Yes.
Okay.
You pressed the amount overlap here.
It's very good. I like it.
Do you have a copy?
I do, yeah.
Okay, there's, the funny thing too is my list of priorities, I actually did them when I was on vacation, when I had them on track.
Sorry.
And I sent it to Larry, and I was like, you got a full seven in the mail? And I'm like.
Oh, he's good.
Something about.
You have it? Okay, good.
I realized I'm sitting on the ground.
Yeah, I was, I was.
I was like, it's funny that Larry didn't put any of mine, because I got, he got, he sent this to me, so I have, you know, I have everyone's. But he was like, you don't have anything for me?
So this is, that's the backup of, you know, people's actual priority list. Um, I didn't have yours, but I know you were away. So.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I need to take some time to.
Don't, don't apologize. I was just pointing out. I knew you were away, so.
Good chocolate makes up for it, no worries.
Yeah, right. Thank you for the chocolate.
Actually, I, I wanted to ask, but once I do have a chance to, to think of some of this, can you just incorporate mine when I get them to you?
Well, let's see where we end up here tonight.
Okay.
I mean, maybe, look, I don't know how it's all gonna play out, to be honest with you. Because it is, it's, um, it was an interesting exercise, how it all kind of played out.
Okay.
So my, my observation of all this is that, um, I know we left here with the idea that you would put together three to five of your most important things. And the problem is, is that I think, um, I think you started feeling that, that if you left off important things, especially the ones that are actually getting done already, if you left off those important things, that you felt like people were gonna think that, you didn't think they were important. Like the town hall, I'll use your example. Just, you put that on your list as the town hall restoration, right? As a priority. Well, that's getting done. There's no way it's stopping. You know what I mean? So.
Right, so it doesn't have to be.
So it's not necessarily the way we talked about. So, and others did similar things. You know, these are, these are the things I think are important that are going on right now. Like, I think, Brian, you did that as well.
I did, yeah, I had.
You did that as well?
Yeah, that's right. So that's how.
I thought we could get done.
So, should we just focus on things in the process?
Sure.
Well, that's a question.
Here's, so I, I'm not sure. I'm leaving it. I'm just, I'm teeing up this conversation because I'm not sure how you actually wanna handle it. But it was my observation that it's not as though you, you didn't follow the instructions that we all left with. It's that you, you expanded it to include all of the ongoing things that you also are endorsing, that you think are important. You know what I mean? So that's why it was way more than three to five. Well, yours wasn't way more, but it was, that's why it was way more than three to five.
And it had to keep, okay.
Yeah, right. So, and that's okay, but it was an interesting exercise. But that's why, that's why this list is as long as it is. Yeah.
It's hard to say, you know, I don't care about the things that we're already doing. And that's why I'm focused on things I thought we could accomplish. But in the, by the end of our fiscal year, and the things that were past starting anew, and I almost didn't kind of, uh, ignored the things that might continue that are, yeah.
Right.
And there was these three there as well.
And I took a, I, I took the liberty of, of putting down my feelings as well, even though I'm not a board member. But, um, I took a different approach, well, similar, but, um, slightly different, in that I identified two new, totally new things that you should be focusing on, in my opinion. And pretty much everything else on the list was either less important, because it, it was new but less important, in my opinion. Or it was ongoing anyway, so there's really no reason to talk about it. Now, I did also acknowledge that there are some things that I listed here as being ongoing that may not be getting the attention you think they should get, or may be getting too much attention than you think they should get. And that's okay too. You know, if there's.
Right, right. And that was what I tried to say, my paragraph at the end of it. You know, part of this is what, what's not just ongoing, but what's within our control, what is necessarily has to slow down because other factors come into play, what is totally ours, what involves outside entities. And I think we all have, you know, um, like, big goals and achievable priorities are two very different things. Like, one of the things that I was working on, the original list of priorities that you had distributed back in January.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so one of them was this implement, uh, streamlined building permits approvals. I have no idea where that came from, but that was on the original list. It seemed like a bite-sized chunk that could be fairly easily accomplished, which is why I put it on the list. But I don't know if it's that, you know, that specifically should be an important priority. But I was looking at what, what's actually doable in, at least in, that we can measure at the end of the year, you know, accomplish. Kind of what you were saying, like, we can do it in a year, or we can at least get it to start this year.
Right. Yeah, no, and I don't know where that one exactly falls, because I don't think it's as bite-sized as you think. But, um, you know, again, I, I, I wasn't looking necessarily at things that were, um, achievable within one year, but I definitely looked at things that, um, you can make significant progress on in, in one year, and, and that are important. So that combination of things is what, is what I put down as being the priority items. And if you noticed, I only had two. And it's not because I'm being selfish that I don't want extra to do. It's just that I think that those, I think that those two, in my opinion, rise above the others.
Comprehensive plan of micro.
Yeah, they're not gonna be done in a year. Well, certainly, we're sitting in August, they're not gonna be done. I can tell you that. So. But you can make significant progress on them, and you can devote significant time at your future meetings to these, because you're gonna have to. Especially, well, microgrid you just heard about, and the comprehensive plan's gonna take your time as well.
Well, here's the good news. Everybody agreed that comprehensive.
Yeah, no, that was the one, that was, that was the one item, yeah.
And microgrid, everybody here tonight was like beaming and smiling and happy, so I think that is pretty high on everybody's list too.
Yeah, three there, three that kind of took off, which were the comprehensive plan, unanimous, um, historic district guidelines, and the improved walkability, traffic, and safety were the three that kinda had at least three people.
Yep.
And then there's another seven that had, you know, two people. So to me, that's, if you can kind of talk about the ten, and if someone else has something else that we're not talking about, that, uh, they wanna bring it up, I think that's fine too. But it's, we've gotta, got all these things down to boil down to ten, at least.
Well, if we're talking about going ahead with the microgrid, we have to do the solar panels. Right?
Well, that's a right, yes and no. Maybe it depends, because they're looking to put the solar panel gently on commercial buildings, like that would not be visible from the stream. So.
Well, my point, listen, I mean, the solar panels, my observation is that's ongoing. That's not, I don't even know that you're gonna turn, change your course on that. You may decide to slow down and not devote as much time to it, or just, you know, deal with it in January instead of October. But, but I, I mean, you're in the middle. You're halfway across the stream on that one. You know what I mean? So I, I wouldn't think that you'd be turning back on that. So, I don't know that you necessarily have to call it out as a priority, or, I mean, I don't, I don't know how this document's gonna get structured. It's gonna be an interesting, interesting exercise.
If you use kind of the priority list to allocate time, um, I think it, it doesn't, it doesn't, this doesn't necessarily set priority order. But I think in a sense, almost on a, on a macro level, the amount of, you know, limited amount of time we have between now and this time next year. You know, I would guess that, I would hope, actually. you know, I would guess that, I would hope, actually, that the comprehensive plan would be the thing we spend the most time on, because we've all kind of identified and raised our hands on it. If that's a third of the time, I don't know, or when we start that, I don't know, but, you know, I think it's...
This is starts.
I think that, you know, something like the solar panels, which I think we've gotten to like, probably not close to the end zone, but maybe at the 30-yard line, you know, is something that I think it's worth pushing on, because I think we've all kind of said, you know, like, I guess, Eli Mark and I have quoted for it, you know, it's something that I think we've all identified as important enough, and there's enough ambiguity with the ARB that it's having an impact on policy. So, you know, I think that's something we probably should go time on, you know, something like that, something like the solar panels, which is obviously an ongoing thing, but I have the sense that's something that we're close to being able to finish, you know, if we get bogged down in that last, the last, you know, five percent of getting actual hard language or something, but...
Yeah, I agree, the reason I didn't forget that is because we were really close to being done on that. Similarly, I mean, I was struck when I saw that Connie was going to lift the deficit on affordable housing as one of the goals, and I thought, that is, I can steer to my priorities completely, but it didn't seem to me that that was this year, that there wasn't much immediate need to, the committees are talking along, things are going fine, there was nothing that struck me as a definable, specific goal for this year.
Yeah, and I think also that the message isn't saying that we don't think that's important anymore, just not something that we say we have to allocate a lot of time to.
I think, I think the tricky part here is in drafting the document, making that distinction about the things that you want to see done and the things that you see as long-term goals. I mean, you kind of talked about this before, when, when you last talked about this, that, you know, just because you put it on the list doesn't mean it's something you're gonna work on tomorrow, but you don't wanna lose sight of it. So affordable housing's a perfect example, you've made some progress in that area with the help of the housing committee, and it will be a long-term goal of yours, I assume, but does that mean that you're, you're next month going to go full steam into revising legislation in some manner to, you know, actively promote it? I don't know, I mean, you may say yes, you may wanna work on it next month, but that's, but, but you may not, because you know you have other things to do, and so then it ends up as one of your long-term goals that you don't have out of your sights.
And one of our principles, one of the things, one of our guiding principles, for want of a better word, that this is always important, the question is, does it require action, immediate action this year? And that's one of the things I would say, always important, but nothing on the immediate horizon. Whereas something like the microgrid, that is a new initiative that's gonna require, that fits in with a lot of our environment, all of the various goals we discussed already, but it will require time and attention and action this year.
I think I have to differentiate between what actually requires village labor and what requires cost, because, for instance, comprehensive plan, there's gonna be a good deal of this that is not gonna be our labor initially, right? Maybe, maybe at the time that it's ready for presentation and review.
Right.
So it's gonna be more, you know, developing whatever the community-based panel is, and, you know, there'll be a cost, but it's not really, this is one of the things that's probably back-end loaded, whereas...
Well, I think it's, it's front and back, but not middle, because the front, you, you need to decide how you're gonna attack.
Yeah, but I don't see that as being a long-term, as a, a long-term process to decide what pieces of it should be looked at, I mean...
Well, I know, and how you're, and how you're gonna attack it, I think that's the key question that you don't have the answer to yet, is exactly how you're gonna set up the analysis of the various areas, and, and whether you're gonna have committees working on those various areas, whether you're gonna have working groups, whether you're not gonna have any community involvement, I mean, you know, there's a whole different ways to attack lots of different things, but, so I think there's upfront, there's probably a little lull in the middle, and then there's, there's certainly back-end.
Back-end, yeah.
But anyway, but, but no, you're right, it's, just because it's on the list...
That middle is gonna be a long, is gonna be a long, you know, if you look at it, try to see what the three, if there are three phases, that middle one's gonna be, you know, is longer.
Oh, you'll go, you'll go months, months at a time, where you're not really dealing with it at this table, you know?
So that's what I, you know, we, some of this stuff is gonna be, I guess that's my concern, just because it's on the list doesn't mean any of them have a particular amount of our energy to, for us to be involved with, right?
And I do think a lot of it is our communication to Larry, and he should be focusing on it, and driving forward, or your staff, not just you, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's, I find it extremely helpful to know what the board's focus is, so that I know, and I'm not gonna think of a silly example, but I know whether to, next week, set up a meeting on topic A as opposed to topic B. If I know topic B is something that, you know, it's down the road, I'll get there, then I'm not gonna deal with it right now, I'm gonna deal with pushing some other thing forward, you know what I mean?
Exactly.
So that, so that's very helpful for me to know, that...
And that's our job, so some of this is gonna take our time, but most of this is, is not, most of this is gonna be you and your staff or other committees and whatever. So, again, it's down to what we want to see happen this year, and some of this, some of these items, I think that just, again, depending on how we phrased it or what we were working off, like, implement efficiency, streamline building permits, long-term planning reported by departments, are really more or less, you know, are talking to the same sort of thing. And if we can specify it more in terms of other particular things, but I think Connie put it well, it's like, start the process where each year, perhaps, we're looking at one department in terms of streamlining and becoming more efficient.
Right.
And I think it also makes sense, just because, as Mark was saying, there's, you know, some of these are gonna be, like, busy beginning and end to kind of a soft middle, that we shouldn't, like, leave it till next year to summarize, but maybe every quarter, every three months, where, where are we? And there are gonna be the inevitable things that take longer, like Villatoll this year. Why isn't town hall in Villatoll since this is another?
You're moving ahead.
I...
People call it both.
My theory, well, first of all, it says town hall.
Yeah.
That would explain it.
Yeah.
My theory is that it is the town hall in the generic sense of the word, this is the town hall where people met, you know, the hall, the location where the townspeople met.
It is strange.
But it was, when it was created, we were a village already, and the town was a town, so there's no confusion there. I, other than that, that's my, my working theory.
Yes, it doesn't say city hall, so...
Yeah, no, not yet.
You're really moving ahead.
No, unless we're...
Once we get our microgrid, then we'll want to move here. How it operates.
Yeah, not yet.
I still wanna speak out about one other thing, and I'm gonna look back at the issue that I brought up the other day, the water quality monitoring. That's a cost priority, that's not really a labor priority at all. I mean, it's gonna be a, a very minor thing in terms of getting a contract to agree. My concern here is that when you mix things like that, you're looking at something that you're delaying because, you know, as you delay it more and more, it becomes a more severe issue each year to try to, the recovery costs go up. So, you know, some of this stuff, I understand about how it implies. What comes of this is not, I'm gonna try to come at this two different ways, what comes of the water quality analysis and the reservoir analysis would be a recommended action plan, and that's where it really falls into the priority list at that point, because until you have that, you don't even know what it is, do you know what I'm saying? So there are a number of things on here that are basically kind of mom and apple pie, they're very high-level statements of stuff that really don't have any traction below them until they are, you know, move a certain distance and get, or very specific definitions are put around them, you know?
So, well, I mean, that, if you wanna take that one issue, the reason you have this discussion is to come to a decision as to whether your colleagues feel the same way, you know what I mean? You, you believe it's critical, others may not, or they do, I don't know, so...
Well, I, I actually have a problem with it being on the priority list, per se, because I think, you know, overriding the village environmental responsibility for the resources should be, number one, it shouldn't even be in question. And this, the reservoir, like Halsey Pond, we've seen what happens with Halsey Pond when it got ignored for so many years. Reservoirs going in the same path, these are resources that should be something that we're looking at for the community and for the children, you know, the kids, the future residents, this is long-term asset to the, to the village overall. It's not something that you can just play... I don't think it's a, it should not be, I mean, I understand pulling together the money for it is something, and there'll be some amount of effort at some point to talk about what it takes, what the plan is, what we're willing to do, but like in the Halsey Pond thing, after a number of years, what came down was, you know, an algae side was used directly, and there was a certain cost, and there was a certain process that had to be followed. But to me, it's sort of like, there's something significantly different about it, and, you know, I know last time we had a meeting where it was, we talked about, it was my passion, and actually, I walked away from it and thought about that for a very long time. And I actually don't agree that it's my passion, I believe that it's a fundamental responsibility of the municipal government to protect its resources to the fullest extent possible. And to pass it off as, as my passion is just basically saying, we don't care about the resources of the village for future generations.
I, Mark, I do get what you're saying, that there's a difference between prioritizing between, say, completing the parking regulations and, I'm not gonna come up with a good other thing, but where we could choose...
Sign code.
Sign code, okay.
A day in the sign code.
Parking and sign code, so there's the two desirable things to do, they would each take time and some money, we might have to choose between them, or fast-track one and slow-track the other, but you do make a compelling case, I understand. It's not just that this is your opinion or your passion, but this is, you know, also in Lohe, this, this, this week, I think, was the picture of them raking the gunk out of the, out of the...
Out of cotton, rubber.
Yeah, so this is, I agree with you, this is, this is critical, and you, you started talking about it one or two meetings ago, and then we kind of got off into the bigger issue of priorities and how we decide priorities. But if we look at this list, you know, there's, there's, unsurprisingly, your priorities pretty much all focus around environmental stuff, and perhaps we could tag that as one thing that we do need to address. So whether that would be the sustainability, implement environmental action plan, because where I was trying to go with my priorities is there were like 15 things under environmental, how do we, how do we, like, get a grip on this? So they're not all like these wonderful things that need to be done and we would love to do, but what's, what's critical to get started this year? And I'm pretty much persuaded that the reservoir is.
I mean, I don't think, I think I'd argue that we shouldn't take care of the reservoir in Halsey Pond. I think that when I look at it, you know, I think that having kind of a, a monitoring program that is, you know, fairly robust and ongoing is good, but, you know, to me, if I had spent 25 to 50 grand on something, I'd like to try to do something that, that could treat it, and is there is a kind of a accepted type of thing, you know, is that a better thing to do right away, to treat it, as opposed to, you know, and then look at maybe monitoring it, but not as a big... Or can we train someone like Jim Englishby to sample water, you know, as opposed to, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things to it with the dredging and all that stuff, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces to it, if we did it right.
But I think they, I feel like we're getting into the weeds here, into the...
Yes, they are.
So I'm not sure...
I think, I think it's almost a different, I, I almost agree with you that that is a different type of priority than some of the other things on here, because, well, I think there's always the two pieces of it, because I think some of it's time-sensitive. And I think you're right, that it's not something, it's almost like saying, you know, one of my priorities is to maintain the parks generically or something, it's like, okay...
That just means we have to be sure, make sure that the park's the government has the resources it needs, and maybe that's what we need to do.
And that's what we have to do.
The water department.
Exactly, right. And/or the, and/or the, or the right department, I might be not even sure who the right person is, but, but I think, I think you're right. I think it's something that doesn't necessarily have to be on this, it could be probably one meeting, when someone knows what they're talking about, and...
Was I presenting what from last year, was Sven present, coming up with a plan without any discussion or real feedback, I'm sure we could narrow down, what do we absolutely need to do this year, and what do we need to do to be able to be on top of it in the coming years, maybe it doesn't have to be as involved, or maybe takes a different complexion.
And he might say, you know, 80% of, of visual, I look at like this, that ignored for a couple hundred years. They need to be dredged, you have to regulate, or whatever, you know, I'm just making that up, as an example, but maybe that's where we kind of, and I, and I think it's something that we should, you know, look at putting money into, and I think Halsey Pond's the same way. Yeah, so I think that, I think I'm just taking that, not that it's not a priority, but I think it's almost something that's finable enough and actionable enough and time-sensitive enough that we just take it from here and put it right out into an agenda. If it's not Monday, then, you know, as soon as possible. To kind of have to set up a meeting with someone who's, you know, maybe bring Joe in, Jim Englishby in, Joe Martino, Jim Englishby in, Sven, or someone that would be the expert, and just say, what do we have to do here? You know, have a half-hour discussion on, you know, kind of the, the near-term steps and then the longer-term steps, and have something out there, so it wouldn't have to be, you know, we don't have to try to prioritize this and have it on next February after we talk about the comprehensive plan hearing, it's...
And some of these, I mean, they are, to jump forward, I, I think we should do something along that line, I think, but something like support regional sustainability planning efforts, I mean, that's really aspirational, that's, in a way, that's just keeping ears open, and so if something comes through, the village officials, just the same way that the, the grant for the study of how to improve walkability and likability on Broadway, we were talking about that as part of our pedestrian safety thing, but it turns out, other people were concerned, too, and there was, there was a state grant that was open, so we're involved now in that process, I guess, wherever it's gonna be going for the grant. And so I guess some of these that I put in here were more like, rather than being specific actions, they are more like, you know...
Long-term.
Yeah, you know, have your antenna out to see what's going on.
Precisely.
And so this whole, my wish could be certainly simplified down in terms of, and I'm sure other people had the same kind of thing.
And I do think, too, part of that, I think that also gets to the same point, it's almost the yin to the yang of the things that are ongoing that we did put in our priorities, it's almost like, these are things we think are very important, we're working on now, these are things that are always gonna be important to us, and then these are the things we're pointing out now that we're gonna start action on or hope to complete in the next, you know, foreseeable future.
Yes, yes.
And that way, you know, I think it also does help, if you say, if you can point to, you know, something and say, it's in our priorities, again, you know, even if it's in the preamble, you know, I think, I think that's helpful, and it also does remind us, and reminds, you know, future boards, we're all thrown out here, that, you know, those are important things this, this, this group of people.
Are we gonna have a disruptive election, I can hope this following, for the village?
Could be, all write-ins, all the Trump fallout, it's true about us.
So I, so how do we do that, then? How, because I feel like there is kind of apple and oranges still in this list, meaning that...
And, and some of them are like specific things, and some of them are...
Avocation.
Exactly, and I think, I know Larry's going on vacation, so maybe I'll take the first shot at it. We're almost kind of break these down into...
I think we've really...
Yeah, I think we've started to do that.
Really started to do that. Maybe we should just go down and just, just say...
Yeah, I'm kind of going to...
Your current or...
For long-term, yeah, I'm starting to do that, but...
It's a current, it's a plan, we know we're doing it.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a new thing that we target this year as, as starting, probably not completing, but...
But we should, this is, this is one of the things that's probably a tough priority for us, after living through Continuum and Brightview and some of the other kinds of questions, or...
It's the one we're...
Really, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that would, this absolutely means we need, you know, quarterly reports, because there will be different timing phases.
Okay.
The other one, like implementing efficiencies, there were three or four that fall under that, and just let's figure out which we don't have to start there to do tonight, but which are the best words, implement efficiencies, streamline building permits, long-term planning reported by departments, those I think are all the same package, and that's not...
Which are somewhat long-term, I mean, they...
Somewhat long-term, but these are the things that could be started.
But as an aspiration, right.
Yeah, but could be started, you start with one department and, you know, start taking a look.
Well, I mean, you know, a lot has been done already in the building department, but one of the things we talked about in terms of greater efficiency in the, in the overall board processes, where they, was the notion of, you know, going all electronic and having the board down here and supplying everything as PDFs, et cetera, et cetera. And we know there's a few, you know, there's cases where you have to have the hard copy, but there's quite a bit of progress already made in that direction, do you agree?
Sure.
And so it would be really, some of this might be even more just budgetary, like, do we have the money in the budget for the smart board, or whatever, the prediction board?
So maybe this isn't one of those ongoing things, they're not as specific, there's nothing perhaps specific?
Well, that particular thing's ongoing, but, I mean, I think the streamlining building permits and... permits and approval process is less, the important aspect of that is not so much how the information is disseminated and how it's applied for and how people make applications, but it's how it gets processed once the application's made. And that, that streamlining process, in other words, streamlining our code, you know, what goes to the planning board, then what goes to, you know what I mean? Laying out what that process is. And that effort is a significant one. Because the code is a...
Behemoth.
Long, yes. Good word. And to simplify something that's in that condition is not the easiest thing. You can start over, probably easier, you know what I mean? But, so it'd be very difficult to analyze all that. It would be very labor intensive, not necessarily from, from you. You'll, you'll have to check in at certain times and make certain decisions. But it would be a very labor intensive project for a consultant, really. But anyway, but that doesn't mean that isn't your long-term goal, is to streamline. And it may simply be, if you've set that as your long-term goal, it may simply be that when a very good suggestion comes to you that helps streamline a process, you now know where you stand on it. You know what I mean? It doesn't mean you blindly approve it, but it simply means that this is one of your guiding principles. You know, when we came to you with the changing review process involved with cellular tower, you know, antenna upgrades and things like that, that...
Right, I was just going to bring that up.
That was prompted by federal regulation largely. But the reality is that was an efficiency that we brought to you and you analyzed it after some, after first rejecting it, but then the laws changed. And you said, sure, this is, this makes sense. You know what I mean? So, and you went along with it. So...
But didn't we go along with it insofar as, correct me if I'm wrong here, we still, they still go before the planning work, don't they? But they just...
For, I don't want to get into it. It's, because it gets really technical. It depends on the nature of the equipment and the outward appearance, whether that's changing. So it may just be a staff level review, or it may be a planning work. But it depends on the nature of the application. But you allowing only the staff level review was the efficiency that you built in. And you did that because maybe you had a guiding principle of trying to streamline things. So that's, that's my point. Okay. Downtown parking regulations are, are going to get done. We're probably 80% of the way there. We have a bit of a stumbling block that relates to the availability of parking for employees of the businesses. We have a problem with the new scheme. So that's something that has to get solved. But that's, that's ongoing. That's, that'll be done, as soon as we solve that problem, that'll be done.
Yeah, that should be on the ongoing list. That's the second paragraph.
Yep.
So who is responsible for resolving the problem?
Me.
It's on his list.
I have to come up with a solution that you will ponder.
There's no one else to ask?
No, I know what the solution is. I have to, I have to get a time to frame it for you so you can make a decision.
Not when I'm on vacation.
All right.
So it's not, it's not that far off. But it's on, it's on the ongoing list. And the, by the way, before you, before we keep going to this, can I just, can I just ask that at the end of this, we come up with kind of a framework structure for how these priorities are going to be presented? And I know that's what we're trying to do here. So it sounds to me like we're going to have a category of things that are ongoing and you expect to continue to put effort into to complete. That's one category. I mean, you can figure out the wording. Then there are, then there's a category of new and very important items that we will make significant progress on in the next fiscal year. Doesn't mean you'll finish them, but you'll make progress. And then you have a category of long-term aspirational goals. Is that kind of what it is?
Yes.
Guiding principles, whatever, yeah, wherever you want.
That's what we were talking about.
So to me, to go through the first four, update comprehensive plan as a focused priority for the year. Implement efficiencies to reduce costs, guiding principle. Streamline building permits approvals, kind of guiding principle, even though it's a specific department.
Well, that's guiding to long-term project, I guess. I think it's more than just guiding principle.
And then update downtown parking regulations, ongoing project. Sustainability, implement environmental action plan.
Now, I put that down as ongoing. And I know that there'd be some debate from some of you because you haven't seen a lot of progress. But there are, there are some things that are happening, but it's not a lot. I'm admitting that. It's, you know, we're addressing LED, for example, to reduce the cost of village facilities. That's one of the areas in the environmental action plan. It's one little sentence, but it's, it's being addressed. So, you know, this one's tricky because you may say devote more energy to it, but it's a big plan. So by saying devote more energy to it, it's, it's a weighted thing, you know what I mean?
But it seemed to me that, you know, we, Mark said here about taking care of the reservoir and the water. That would be the thing, the particular item in this general category that we would want some focus on this year.
Right. And that, but that the long-term is, the environmental action plan is still your long-term goal to implement the various aspects.
But here, correctly, you're still looking at upgrading the lights in village facilities, right? And internal lights. So that's a step in the action plan.
Well, that's what I mean.
Looking at, right, exactly. It's going to be lots of little steps. The only one that really sticks its head out to me is being one of those things that tends to be a much larger whale than the water is the green, but building code. And, you know, it's a matter of, if you wait long enough, something's going to come from the state and probably.
It's a big effort, you know?
Yeah, it's a big effort.
And you all have to agree that, that it's worth the effort or that you have the time to make the effort. I mean, and it's not a law, and I don't mean to imply that, but it, but it will be a lot of input, for sure.
Well, I guess the question I have is, I mean, on that one, there's a sort of a philosophical issue, and we can go on from it. But it's like, there's a certain amount of work pressure that happens anyways. And people who are building new, new buildings, new homes are going to try to make them probably as energy and utility efficient as possible, just because everyone knows that's the thing to do and it's the way to save costs. So I don't know, like a lot of buildings going up in Sterling Ridge, you know, you hear about them. And there's a few of those that are like basically almost asset house level construction. So people are going that way. I'm not sure what the immediate benefit to the overall village is to have a green building code. I mean, that's kind of theoretical. But there's a lot of effort there to build one on your own. And it seems like the most impact is going to be not with existing structures, but with new structures. And considering that villages...
There's not exactly a lot of new structures being built.
Right, it's pretty, well, now, on that said, you know, something like Brightview did come along, the fact that they, you'd want to make them conform to a LEED-type standard would be to the benefit of everyone, if for us.
But, but exactly. So this is not necessarily one of the things we are going to tag, we're going to spend a lot of time. And if we're going to put one basket for our environmental eggs this year, it's going to be based on your very compelling case, the reservoir.
But yeah, I'm just saying this from the point of view that there is a certain amount of pressure in terms of what are you guys doing? Why aren't you doing something about it? There's other, you know, there's market forces where people can get benefits by installing, you know...
Energy Star.
Energy Star. And they, you know, you can get discounts through Con Ed and everything else. So there are some benefits there moving forward.
Is how much more, you know, all that blood hanging through is either kind of, it just, it just makes sense because that's what people want from the builder's perspective. And then there are some, you know, issues from state to help. So you're saying, if it's going to be a huge effort, how much are we actually accomplishing?
If we're building out large neighborhoods, I'd say it would be imperative to get something in place. But...
Stay with family homes. We're fairly efficient.
And any buildings a village does, if there is a future firehouse, DPDW, you can, you can die there.
Yeah, right.
That's your choice. So essentially, on the environmental action plan, you will continue to, you will continue to make steps to implement the various aspects of the environmental action plan, but specifically address water quality issues and efficiencies in village buildings.
And I think, the other thing is, we really should ask for, you know, we really should be asking for, you know, it's one of those things that needs to get reviewed periodically, not, not every 10 years, but maybe every, you know, every year somebody should take them up and go through it. We should be getting input from the Green Policy Task Force as well, if they're really going to serve the purpose of trying to say what they think the current odd buttons are, right? I mean, it doesn't mean we have to...
Agree with them, but yeah, at least know what they're thinking.
Yeah, they can spend a few neurons thinking about what might be of value to the village of, you know, the cost effective trade-offs and stuff.
So targeted public outreach is, is actually part of the environmental action plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's happening anyways. So I don't know.
From time to time, yes.
Yeah. That's, that should be ongoing.
Yeah, you're right. Town hall restoration is ongoing.
Water quality we talked about.
Yep, something, support regional, regional sustainability efforts, that's a long-term aspiration.
That's just, yeah.
Review and enhance emergency preparedness.
If you're comfortable with where it is now, but, you know, something like the microgrid will change that whole thing.
Yeah, that addresses that very, very directly, actually. So, I mean, I think from a long-term standpoint, you aspire to have as much, be prepared as much as possible. But specifically, you're addressing it through the potential for the microgrid project.
And I think the one thing I mentioned in the stuff I sent out was that whole notion of, in terms of communication breakdown, how do we get the word out to people? How, you know, is there a way to, to get the word out to larger groups of people so it's just not a rural village or whatever?
I think there's an emergency.
Well, like the last time, about the only thing effective after the, was the cell towers were just about down except for, or running out of batteries, except for text messaging. That was about the only thing working. But anyways, you know, maybe we're too small, every community would worry about that, but...
Long-term planning and reporting, that's kind of rolled into your efficiencies and...
Absolutely. Mainstream.
Streetscape projects, yeah, clearly ongoing, but also clearly very long-term, too. I mean, so it's kind of one of those split things.
Can I ask a question though?
Yeah.
Because I'm just to lend my voice to some of these. I mean, I, I would, I would mark that as one of my priorities as well. Have we, we have started on some of those?
Yeah. So the, the Aqueduct Crossing project, we have a grant for that. That's, you know, that's in this design stage. We have the, the corner grant for the, what we call the Theater Plaza, but it's...
Right.
I was like that.
Well, I have to give it some...
Lincoln Plaza.
I came up with Aqueduct Crossing and I came up with Theater Plaza.
I liked Theater Plaza.
But that's, but that's the connection, you know, with the Walk of Fame to the Theater entrance. So, no, and so there's that. And benches, you know, we talk, we even have a potential for some ADA handicap accessibility, which is all kind of streetscape stuff. So that's why it's ongoing, but it's not the whole plan, of course.
Right. And I think you've been terrific about seizing particular grant opportunities.
Yeah.
So it's a streetscape plan, but you're looking for where's the money? And what can we put, we're talking...
I think that that's a perfect thing where you can highlight this year, the focus for that is going to be on the...
But definitely, so items like making uniform, the benches, the stylo street lamps. I feel like those are less, or maybe they are more long-term, but...
No, benches are, there's, benches are coming. We had a grant for that. The street lamps won't happen until there's underground wires.
Okay.
In other words, the lights are up on the poles right now.
Okay.
So when the poles are gone, we'll have, we'll be all picked out the kind of street lamps.
Nice hanging baskets from everything.
That would be awesome. And like the, the enhanced pedestrian crossings, like the ball balance?
Yep, that's, that's still under development. And actually, I gave you a preview of what the, what the engineers thought.
They did not.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't like the idea because of the traffic during radiuses and all that. But that, that's all under development.
Okay.
And also then, the grant got submitted for the crosswalks, right?
Yes.
Which I think is fabulous.
Well, I will see what, yeah, if not, if anything, but it's there now.
So far, I think it just underscores the whole idea of being proactive and alert to funding opportunities.
Exactly.
Look, I'll tell you this. The greatest thing to have in my position is a plan that I can turn around and grab and open up and say, yeah, we got a project for that.
Yep.
You know what I mean? So if there are other areas in our, in our operations, in our future improvements in this village, we should be very cognizant of creating those types of plans. One of them, for example, was on the mayor's priority list, which I, and Larry Monchi, about, you know, improvements in the parks, Matheson Park, whatever park it is. Now, Matheson's a little more challenging because it's residence only. But to the extent that there are grants available, it would be really helpful to have a plan to pull off the shelf and say, here, this is what we want. And we did this with community input and it's a community consensus on what we want. And, you know, that's why the streetscape plan is working, because of the way it was created, with the level of community support, the community direction. And it just, it's worked so far.
And I know we did get a lot of questions about why we spent so much money on consultants and all that kind of stuff. But I think we've made, it's made back with the grant money. You know, it's been a very good investment. And it's also, it got it done. You know, it 'd be very hard to have, you know, 10 volunteers come up and pick a similar type plan. I don't think anyone has the expertise that they really don't have the talent. So...
Well, they want one particular thing, but not see the big picture.
Right.
I mean, hang your baskets.
Yeah, hang your baskets and world's fair benches.
You might've gotten the benches, the grant for the benches, but I don't think you would've gotten the Aqueduct Crossing from the consolidated funding process. And I doubt you would've gotten this Theater Plaza. You might've gotten it for something else because they were going to give it anyway. But, you know, it was, it was a good project.
Someone gave me a Theater Plaza.
Can we get together?
It's still ours, why can't you get a ticket?
Also, I was offered all.
Yeah, right.
I just think when people come up and say, and start questioning the purpose of consultants, I think they're working off a very old script from, you know, state and federal level politics. I just don't know that it makes, you know, villages don't necessarily have the expertise on staff.
But I do think also Larry directed it very well in making it a, not just like a grandiose, it would just be a wonderful town to live in. It was like, we want to be able to break this down into pieces, like we did with the park department study.
Yeah, you can't, you can't take a plan like that and say that you're going to implement it tomorrow.
Yes, it's going to be $28 million, we're going to write the check and let's do it.
Yeah, I mean, as it is.
And everybody, your taxes are going up.
But that has nothing, that has nothing to do with the anti, the knee-jerk anti-consultant thing.
No.
You know, the anti-consultant thing is just like...
It's just, it's just...
Listen, we're getting it with the wayfinding consultant, too.
I'm sure.
But, you know, that's a small investment. Okay.
Where is the wayfinding? Is that on here somewhere?
No, it's, it's part of the streets.
Good fund.
Yeah. It's part of the Theater Plaza project. All right. Fair and affordable housing.
We talked about that, it's inspiration, long-term.
Historic district guidelines is ongoing, really.
It's coming up soon.
Yeah, you'll be hearing from them Monday. So, doesn't mean it's adopted, it just means that you'll be hearing from them. Local landmarks law, I mean, I think it's on, well, it's not ongoing yet. So I, this is one where I think you're going to need to consult a little bit more with, with your colleague, Connie.
You may, I almost see it as part two of the historic district or something.
Yeah, it could be viewed that way, sure. So I don't know how you want to characterize it for this. I think Connie wrote it up.
Yeah, this is Connie's particular.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, you know, we did do something with, like, the...
McTernan?
McTernan, right. The...
The building on Main Street.
The one on Broadway, McTernan, where we recognized that that was something that needed to have, an ability to have historical preservation. So, you know, outside of the historic district, there's a lot of houses like that or parks like that around the village. It's hard to know how you get buy-in until you start to understand what the regulations might be.
I think, for purposes of this document, I think it's pretty safe to say, and you're probably putting yourself in a good position by saying that it is ongoing, because I think you do have a committee that's been focused on it. And it's your committee. So if you don't include it as an ongoing, I think that would be inaccurate. So if you, let's, let's do that. Does that mean you're locked into adopting it? Of course not. That's got to play out, you know? And you don't even know what's going to come from that. So, but let's say it's ongoing and...
This one's also ongoing?
Yeah, that's clearly ongoing, but, you know...
You can highlight some things we're focusing on.
Yeah.
Including that crossing.
Let me check the traffic's on. Kyle Walter.
All right.
Oh, my panels.
That's, that's ongoing, yes. That's, that's ongoing, yeah.
Almost complete, I confirm. Sign code update.
It's also ongoing. Stalled, but ongoing.
But that's, you know, that's important because that's what we move on through the year, you know, somebody may write us an email saying, what happened to your sign code? And we shouldn't get derailed into having a very long discussion about, yeah, gee, what should we be doing about those signs? If we're clear that, yeah, this is ongoing, but it's not one of the five top priority items this year, this is how we keep ourselves on track.
Right.
And not get pulled off by, you know, something comes up that a small group of people or one neighbor or something gets upset about something. It's important, we are working on it, it's ongoing, but it's not one of the top five that really we need to devote our attention to this year.
Well, this particular one, that is not probably exactly a good characterization because what is in the sign code update was actually just stuff that the building inspector was asking for. So that's what drove it, was basically his complaints about the code as we released to it. So that's a little bit different than people in the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it's, but it is ongoing, you know, again, you can debate the level of effort that's been put into it to, to keep it advancing, but it's, it's on the list and it's gonna get advanced, just like any of the other ongoing items, so.
And microgrid, is a, what do we call it?
Focus priority.
Focus priority, I think.
Support Chamber of Commerce, I think, is a long-term aspirational-
Yeah, but it's also things happen. We have the Celebratory Erving today, we've got that woman now who's, she doesn't have a business, but she's trying to reinvigorate the chamber.
Samantha, yeah.
Yeah, so that's great.
And-
So it's ongoing, but clearly things have been happening.
Yeah, and there will be more things happening. I mean, you know, revitalizing the holiday happening, for example, in December, I mean, there's different things that are happening.
But is that a village thing?
Well, yeah, we certainly are involved in it.
I mean, the Chamber of Commerce?
We've always supported that, yeah.
I mean, it's different to support it than be actively involved in it.
It's a merchant thing. It had always been a merchant thing, but the village played a big role in making the day happen. We used to send out, in the days before email, we used to send out a specific newsletter for the holiday happening to announce what was happening on Main Street and the tree lighting and the winter carnival that might happen.
With the school, yeah.
Yeah, with the school, if the school was running something, so yeah, we used to make a whole day of it, and that was our, our support for the whole event. So, anyway, Ted, but I think you're right, it's long-term to keep supporting that, but there are specific highlights, so. Okay?
Yeah, as long as we're not giving money to the National Chamber of Commerce and-
No. The maths, I put down specifically Matheson Park renovations because Brian, that's what you mentioned and that's what Larry Lonkey happened to mention as well.
Kind of the bigger infrastructure type things, because I know it's one that's been kind of, you know, people liked it a little bit, but yes, I saw that, it also had on there, so.
So the question is, it's certainly not, it's not ongoing at this point. I mean, I, I suppose there was, there, there is a master plan.
Yeah.
And I suppose you could make the argument that, that upgrading the bathrooms and the playground is part of that, you know, but I think there's a larger plan for that that isn't quite ongoing yet.
Yeah, and, you know, with ADA accessibility and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So maybe we almost put it with, almost kinda make it like, to look like, you know, kind of a loose, ongoing.
It's something we don't wanna lose sight of, that we recognize it's important, but it's not necessarily-
But I think maybe it signals to Joe that, you know, maybe he doesn't push it back again on his, on his capital plan or something.
Well, he wasn't pushing it back, we were pushing it back, so.
I mean, it's, it's like, hate to say it, but unless, until you're ready with knowing that your next capital budget's gonna be making use of it, you almost don't have to have a plan. I mean, I, I mean, it's a little absurd if you want your plan to figure out what the cost is gonna be, but until you get serious about putting the money up.
Yeah, and I think, I think there's the dependence, I mean, if, if we think that we're gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars on a microgrid project, I don't wanna spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars or doing bathrooms, you know, but-
That's what's-
The microgrid is not, you know, that's right now, that's, it trumps it, but if microgrid is fully off, then maybe you do spend, you know, that, that, some of that money that was freed up is for reservations.
You haven't heard about urine batters?
No.
Oh, boy.
Moving right along.
There we go. We're gonna start talking about morgues soon, I think. All right.
Morgues?
Morgues, yes. All right. So fire department and DPW facilities.
That's a good, that's a mine, that's a good one, too.
Yeah, yeah, clearly important.
That Larry drafted for, so I can't think of it.
It's good follow-up with Columbia.
Isn't that, correctly, if I'm wrong, that the point right now is that we, we have to find a location, I guess, and I think it's almost like we realize that doing anything with the building, the fire department has this, is just not, and not gonna be up to code.
What kind of mindset in my, in my priorities was, you know, and actually since Larry drafted follow-up to Columbia today, is if our kind of Plan A that we thought was very workable falls apart, maybe we have to start talking about Plan B, maybe that's a, you know-
We have, we have drafts of Plan B and C, you know what I mean?
Right, and I think there's-
They're not ideal.
And I think it's, because I think, and I also think that the second piece is that DPW piece of it is the whole, it's gonna be part, that's why it's gonna be part of, some of this is gonna be part of the comprehensive plan redo.
There's not even a location picked out for that.
Exactly right.
Except for, except for Plan A.
Exactly right, so that's why I think we're gonna look, probably know more in the next month or so, if Columbia has any interest, and then we have to start talking about other ideas.
Do you press them, and I mean, I know their taxes after, is there any kind of, we've been so nice, but is there any kind of pressure we can exert on them?
When we talk about it, do you wanna do a quick segmental session?
Okay, maybe at the end of this?
Yeah.
Right.
We're waiting for Connie, because I'm sure she-
Well, that's a good idea, why don't we wait for Connie?
Yeah, and actually on Monday, I mean, I won't be here, but, but Mary Ann will be here, so.
Okay.
Certainly. Let's bring her into that conversation.
That, yeah.
I wasn't trying to-
And then infrastructure, roofs, water, I think calling that ongoing's fine.
What do you mean by that?
Well, I said ongoing, but I-
Water mains?
They do, exactly. Jim, Jim is convinced to me, I think, that we're fine with what we're doing, but to me, there's, I wanna also, I wanna tell him every year that if there's something you think would be a lot cheaper for us to do that we aren't digging down in the middle of the night, and you think that this line is almost shot, then I want you to start thinking that way, too. And I know he is, he's very proactive about all those things.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a couple of very large projects that he has on the capital budget, and they're gonna be challenging to pay for, but that doesn't mean they're not gonna get done. We're gonna do our best to try to schedule it. Are they emergency, that they have to be done next year? No, they're not.
Yeah.
I could say, what, what makes me think it's kind of odd for this one to be on the list, it's another one of these things that's fundamentally how you have to manage infrastructure. I mean, you know, all municipalities have to have a plan to look at their in-ground resources, let's say, and look at it, what do we have to take care of it, one year, two